The Cuyahoga County Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, will please come to order. The time is approximately 1:05, and I would ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Calling the roll, Ms. Conwell? Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner's absent at the moment. Mr. Hauser? Mr. Hauser's absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Castleberry?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schlepper?
Here.
Council President Miller?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much, and the next item on the agenda is public comment. Has anybody signed in?
Lou?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Finally, it comes to the moment. Our county will start our biennial budget process this year, and as I have mentioned in the past, it is important that our county secure all the resources for our county residents to survive the hard time, at least four years, probably even longer. This budget process, we hope, all the Health and Human Services will get properly funded. Instead of going to lots of projects, county residents actually have very little opportunities to access. For example, if we lost the opportunity with upper funds to help rebuild the facilities for homeless, the unhoused population, at least this budget process, we can make sure the food, the hiring, all those things can be helped by proper budgeting. Do we want to repeat these things over and over again when we know federal budget and state budgets are not helping us? They are against us? I'm no Mark Stanton. 2017, I learned how badly public defender offices, they were poorly funded for decades. If you guys could make up the mind to change that, to correct that, please do that to our Health and Human Services. The unhoused, the patients in the county, we will all appreciate your effort. Thank you very much.
Gail Long?
Okay.
Good afternoon, members of County Council and County Administrator Ronane.
Good afternoon.
Name is Gail Long, and I'm usually here to speak with great passion about the Metro Health system. I was disappointed and concerned to read this morning about County Administrator Ronane's proposed cuts to the Metro Health subsidy. The next two years are going to be significant, not just because we're experiencing cuts now, but there are going to be even more cuts coming as a result of public policy coming from Washington, as well as, to some degree, the state budget, one which just passed July 1st. We are in the midst of difficult times. It will only get worse as time goes on. The county absolutely cannot risk weakening what I consider to be one of its strongest assets, the Metro Health system. I hope that as County Council goes through its deliberations on the two-year budget, it keeps in mind that each day Metro Health estimates that it is losing $1 million a day on indigent care. If our tax dollars are cut to Metro Health and the system loses additional dollars as a result of Medicaid cuts and other dollars impacted by federal policies, Metro Health becomes more and more vulnerable as it attempts to serve all patients who stand to lose their health care benefits and become medically indigent. Remember, the mission of Metro Health is to serve all regardless of their ability to pay, and that has been since the whole time I've been in Cleveland, which is over 50 years. You can raise my taxes to balance the budget and not cut services that people depend on every day. So if you've got to bring up the Health and Human Services earlier than we anticipated, do it. Raise my taxes, because I think that these are the most important services you provide. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Thank you very much, and now is normally the time when I would turn the gavel over to Councilwoman Turner as Chairman of Finance and Budget to run the budget hearing, but this Turner is a little bit under the weather and is not going to be able to be here this afternoon and is asked that I conduct a budget hearing. So this is the first meeting of the biennial budget process. Our purpose is to adopt a spending plan for operations and capital improvements, with the operations being for the next two years, starting in January, and the capital improvements being for five years. So for the benefit of both Council, Administration, and the public, I'm going to go over the dates for the upcoming hearings after today's meeting. After today's overview meeting, then we're going to get into the departmental hearings. And the hearings are scheduled for October 20th at 1:00 p.m., October 28th at 1:00 p.m., November 3rd at 1:00 p.m., November 6th at 1:00 p.m., November 10th at 1:00 p.m., November 12th at 1:00 p.m., and November 17th at 1:00 p.m. And the hope is that on the 17th, we would adopt amendments as needed and pass the budget to Council. But if an additional meeting is needed, we would have that on November the 24th at 1:00 p.m. So that's the outline of the schedule for this process. And so I would just note that the Executive and the Council have been in close communication over the last several months, as the Executive has prepared the budget, and we've had a chance to learn of the Administration's approach, and they've had a chance to hear our comments and concerns, and we think that preliminary process is very beneficial, and we appreciate the collaboration. But I would also emphasize that no decisions have been made, and this is, from an official standpoint, this is the starting place, and the decisions will have to be made in the public process through these hearings. And so, to start off the process, I'm going to call upon Executive Ronane to provide us the budget preview and strategy presentation.
Thank you, Council President Miller and members of County Council. I enjoy our working relationship and wanted to say, working up to framing out this budget, how much I appreciate our working together. This is the biennial budget that is before you, and good afternoon, again, to you, members of Council, and to those who are not here. We will be seeing them throughout this process. Good afternoon to our county staff, and most notably to our residents of Cuyahoga County. Thank you for your advocacy and for your comments and for your partnership in the community. Before I go further, I would like to thank a few people on my team, specifically Katie Gallagher, to my left, our Chief Operations Officer, who's worked tirelessly to put this budget in place with our Office of Budget and Management, led by Director Walter Parfeyowicz and Deputy Director Shontay McCurdy, for their tireless work. I want to thank them, their attention to detail, and their commitment to helping us make tough but thoughtful decisions with this budget.
So I'm going to break in for just a moment, just to announce that Councilman Jones is now present for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon, Councilman Jones. I also want to thank our Departments and Directors in the Fiscal Staff, led by Mike Chambers, all of whom were challenged to make tough budgetary decisions while still providing excellent resident services. And Council President Miller, as you addressed us, you and I, Vice President Conwell, and Finance Chair Turner, while no decisions have been made, have spent a lot of time together in these last few weeks just trying to frame up this budget. As you know, we chose not to take the route of cuts in a method that would be across the board. We went granularly through line item by line item to understand every contract that this county has with its public, and I want to thank every contratee out in Cuyahoga County for being in that front line of services with us. I want to thank, again, the entire Council staff, both now and in advance, for your thoughtful exchange of ideas throughout this process. Your input will help shape a budget that we, together, go forward over the next two years. The all-funds biennial budget before you is $1.94 billion, almost $2 billion, and the general fund budget is $634 million. None of the decisions that led to this budget were taken lightly. Every Department, every line item, and every program was reviewed carefully. This Administration's goal was to protect the programs that make the greatest difference in people's lives, while still being responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars. The budget I present to you today accomplishes those goals: maintaining vital services while preserving both the general fund and Health and Human Service reserves. At the same time, I must acknowledge that the county is facing increasing operational costs and additional revenue challenges. One of our greatest challenges is the rising cost of employee healthcare. We have budgeted for a 10% increase in coverage costs totaling $14 million. In addition, property tax delinquency remains high, and sales tax revenues continue to fluctuate, both of which put pressure on the general fund. In preparing this budget, we are also preparing for what lies ahead. We know that potential federal budget cuts, particularly those affecting SNAP and Medicaid enrollees, could have a serious negative impact on our residents and our ability to deliver services. This budget positions us to be ready to those challenges while maintaining stability in our operations today. Despite all these challenges, this budget contains no employee furloughs, as was talked about, because our workforce is essential to delivering the services that residents need every day. And I want to thank every employee in Cuyahoga County for their everyday tireless work for the residents of this county. Our total general fund operating revenue and expenditures total approximately $634 million. We asked executive departments to budget for lower personnel costs, set as a result of the hiring freeze implemented in 2025. Likewise, executive staff presented more than 100 budget adjustments to OBM, as I asked agencies to trim non-personnel costs. Balancing the budget for HHS was even more challenging. In addition to realigning HHS personnel costs, I worked with directors to present you with nearly $20 million in reductions for 2026 and $22.5 million in 2027 for Health and Human Service agencies. This is difficult work. It's work we wish we didn't have to do. But in the end, total budget for the HHS levy fund is approximately $279 million. Even with these cuts, the county remains committed to supporting critical community partners, and we are providing millions in subsidies. The budget before you provides $37 million to the Adams Board in 2026 and $36.5 million in 2027, and $32 million to Metro Health for 2026, and up at $33.5 million in 2027. In the coming months, I plan to continue to closely monitor revenues and expenses, and I hope to continue close conversations about the budget with County Council. The reductions that were necessary to arrive at this budget are not easy, but I am committed to continual reevaluations of our needs as things develop, either in a positive way with revenue or in a negative way with possible state or federal reductions. We must all work together on the front line to continue to deliver services in partnership with our community residents. Overall, this budget is about people and our shared commitment to a stronger, more resilient Cuyahoga County. This budget plans responsibly for the future. It also ensures that even in challenging times, Cuyahoga County remains a place where government works for everyone. Thank you again to Council for your partnership ahead, and always, and to all of our employees who continue to serve with dedication and compassion. Thank you, Council President. I believe at this time, at your discretion, I'd like to bring up our directors for the full presentation.
So first, for the record, Councilman Hauser has joined the meeting, and before we bring the directors forward, I would ask if anybody has any questions or comments for the Executive. Seeing none, we'll continue.
Thank you again.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers.
Good afternoon.
Walter Parfeyowicz from the Office of Budget Management within the Fiscal Office. So at this point, everyone should have a number of slides and also the budget book. So what I will say is, on each slide that you'll see here shortly, in the blue section in bottom left-hand corner is the page number, if you want to follow along in the budget book. So I've cross-referenced the two documents from one to the other. So thank you for the opportunity to present the executives' recommended biennial budget for both '26 and '27. As the county Executive stated, we believe we've developed a solid operating plan to accomplish the goals, objectives for the county for the next two years. So I'll just quickly go over the process, the budget process, that we started in June. So we developed a base budget. We met with the Departments. We reviewed their budget requests. We approved the overall majority of budget requests with the available resources that we had, and we are recommending a balanced budget in both the general fund and the Health and Human Services levy fund. Just quickly, the parameters that were built into the base for county executive departments: salaries were budgeted at pay 12, I'm sorry, pay 19, which is the first pay in September, added a 2% cost of living increase for each year. For elected officials and boards and commissions, salaries were budgeted at pay period 13, which I believe was the first pay in June, 2% cost of living each year as well. Employer healthcare increased 10% for 2026, as the Executive stated, and 5% in 2027. No changes for attrition were included in the base, and there was no overtime included in the base. Overtime was submitted by various departments during the budget adjustment process, and other expenses were budgeted at 2024 actuals. So we just carried the numbers over from 2024's budget. So the budget requests, as the county Executive stated, 100 budget requests received from all the departments. Now, these requests were general fund, levy fund, and also special revenue funds. So most were for vacancies, new staff, contracts, and other expenses. And the breakdown, budget requests totaling $149.8 million were approved, and they were broken down by percentage, 40% general fund, 2% to the HHS levy, and 58% of the budget requests were special revenue funded. All of these budget requests are all summarized on pages 76 through 88 of the budget book. So those pages have every request that we received at full value. So now I'm going to go into, the next three slides will be the budget requests that were approved in this budget. So I got about three slides worth, but I at least wanted to put them out there so everyone could see. We'll start with the case management system for the Court of Appeals. For common pleas, the judge's salary was not included at pay 13. It was added back. Additional staff for domestic relations. Funding for small business support contracts, and then subsequent reductions to expand the challenge program for the Department of Development. Funding for a tax certificate and daily legal contract for the Fiscal Office. Funding for a tax certificate and daily legal contract for the fiscal office. Funding for an FMLA contract, RTA subsidy, increases for hospitalization and a decrease to workers' comp for human resources. Funding for space at 1801, in-for licensing, some mobile devices, additional CBA expenses, and emergency assistance and options contracts for Health and Human Services. So we did start out with a slight increase in those areas. Funding for internal audit. There want to reduce services that are performed by third-party vendors. A case management system for the inspector general. Additional licensing telecommunications and software for IT. A small reduction for staff realignments and equity adjustments. Increases for overtime, court smarts, Securus, residential treatment, computers, a case management system, and IPS, which is a security system for juvenile court. Funding for additional staff insurance contracts for the law department. Funding for additional services and supplies for the medical examiner. Additional funding for indigent defense for the public defender. Funding for a violence prevention administrator, a new 911 call system, only in 2027. Increased 911 call center costs, family justice center rent, and a reduction, mailroom charges for the public safety and justice services. Funding for additional staff and increased costs for the prosecutor. Funding for increases in Geis rent here for this building. The CHN warrant contract, which handles the county hotel, airport, and road and bridge capital. Road and bridge service contracts, dog kennel cost, downtown Cleveland improvement district assessment. The elimination of the consolidated vehicle fund and increased postage costs for public works. Funding for overtime reductions to the daily legal contract that's being combined in fiscal. FESA expenses, increases for the Axon, Securus, the Keef, IPS, Maglocks, Matzenbaum Alarm Center watch systems, Vance Outdoors, tactical equipment, LiveScan, jail management contract, Summit Food Service contract, and a small decrease for medical services and other expenses within the sheriff's office. Finally, we have additional funding for guest services and maintenance for the Soldiers and Sailors Monument.
So Director, a couple of things. Tell us a little more about eliminating the consolidated vehicle fund and how, what's the impact of that? Is that money spent someplace else?
No, Councilman Miller, the consolidated vehicle fund was a, was a fund that aggregated dollars from many different special revenue funds and general fund to purchase vehicles. What was happening was the money there was being consolidated to the point where we couldn't keep track of whose money was where and for what vehicle. So rather than doing that, we're keeping the funds in their respective fund, whether it's general fund, special revenue, Health and Human Service levy, and we're paying those expenses direct versus using a consolidated vehicle fund. Basically brought the fund down to zero and gave everybody their money back.
Okay, and second question is the sheriff overtime numbers.
Yes.
Are those just for the general fund or is that for all funds?
That is for the all funds. I believe the number is 18.2 million is what was approved for the sheriff for this year.
So for each of those two numbers, could you get me what the overtime number is just for the general fund?
Oh, absolutely. I believe the, the special revenue number for the protective service officers, generally it's about $2 million. The sheriff was on, on track to spend, I believe, about $22 or $23 million this year. There's been quite a few discussions with the sheriff about reducing overtime, eliminating some, some unneeded overtime that was being worked. And I believe we have consensus that we could get down to some of these numbers.
So if the, for 2026, for example, if the 18.2 is, is the total and the protective services is 2 million, then the general fund is 16, 16 million or so?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Walter, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, councilman?
Be happy. I've been three weeks, right? Just with the sheriff's, the medical services, the reduction, can you tell me what's being reduced?
It's just putting them at their spending rate, right? They're, they're actually spending less than what was budgeted for them, even in 2025.
That's in '25 through the chair, but in '24, '23, '22, is it a fluctuating thing? Is it normal that we just go back to the previous year or do we take a curve kind of thing?
Through the chair to Councilman Sweeney, generally we, we budget at prior year's levels and we continue on forward. We're, we're in the process, I believe, with a, a new contract, if you will, that should be in force with Metro Health.
And through the chair, we just, when we get the new contract, we'll have the money to, before, when the time comes?
Through the chair to Councilman Sweeney, I believe this is more than enough to cover that contract.
Last is the other expense, other reductions, it's, or other, other expense reduction, just some examples, because when I hear other, it's not too specific.
Well, these were, these were items through the chair to Councilman Sweeney. These were items that the sheriff's office actually proposed to us.
Oh, cool. So they're trying to do their part?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Gallagher.
Walter, on the overtime, what did we budget last year for the overtime?
I believe it was $22 million.
And was that sufficient?
It's close to the number I think they'll spend.
So they're not coming back for more money?
I don't believe so.
I'll hold you to that. So you're, you see a $5 million dip in overtime. Close to it.
Through the chair to Councilman Gallagher, we've had quite a few conversations with the sheriff's deputies, two of the deputies, and they have, they found areas where overtime is not needed. It's currently being worked, and they believe that we can reduce the number effectively.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Continue.
Okay, at this point, I'll get into some numbers with the general fund. So this, this slide just quickly summarizes the general fund for 2026 and 2027. The budget is balanced in both years, 2026 and '27. Revenues exceed expenditures by roughly $1 million each year. I think you can see that on the last one. So this slide summarizes budgeted general fund revenue by category for '26 and '27. I'm just going to quickly run through these and give you some of the parameters that were built into the numbers. Charges for services budgeted $113.1 million for '26 and $117.7 for '27. What's included in here is a 5% increase over what's projected for 2025. Fines and forfeitures are budgeted at 15.1 and then 15.8. Also, same 5% increase is what we built in here. Interest budgeted 29.9 for '26 and 30.5 for '27. So this is a tough one. We only included a small modest 2% increase here because we're spending down some of our funds, you know, that contribute to our interest earnings so that some of our cash is dropping, and you guys also know that interest rates are also falling. But I will just let everyone know our investment portfolio remains around $1.1 billion, and that's what this is all built on. Intergovernmental revenue budgeted at $77.8 million in '26 and $78.6 million in '27. The majority of this revenue is local government fund and state public defender reimbursements. The local government fund budgeted at $27.8 million in both years. Public defender reimbursements are budgeted at $31 million in 2026 and $31.6 million in '27. The assumption here is 82% reimbursement from the state public defender's office. So the remainder of what's budgeted here is homestead exemption, which is roughly $6 million, and about $9 million in casino taxes. Licenses and permits are budgeted at $101,521 for 2026 and $1,005,198 for '27. Again, 5% straight across the board increase here is what we're expecting. Other revenue is budgeted at $4.5 million in 2026 and $6.6 million 2027. So both years include a $1.7 million transfer for road and bridge and sanitary for the purpose, I'm sorry, for the purchase and renovation of the Harvard Garage. It was done some time ago. This is just paying the general fund back for, for the money that it loaned. And $1.5 million from the general, I'm sorry, from the garage fund for renovations at the Huntington Park Garage. Same, same thing. It was a loan to, to the fund to pay for renovations. But I will point out in 2027, there is $3 million included there from the expected sale of the Hughes Building. That's the old Board of Elections building at 30th and Euclid. Other taxes, while it's labeled as other taxes, it's really bed taxes. Budgeted at $12.5 million in '26 and $12.7 million in 2027. Small 2% increase over prior year. Property taxes budgeted flat at $42 million. That's what we expect to collect this year. In fact, our numbers already reflect that. And then sales taxes budgeted $339.9 million in '26 and $348 million in 2027. So what we've built in here is a conservative estimate of just 2.5% increase over prior year. Questions about revenue before I go on?
Yeah? Walter, you said a 2.5% conservative. What was it over the last biennial, '24 and '25?
It's been roughly 2, 2.5%. This year, we've been running at 2.5%, close to 2.5% for, I'd say through June or July, but now we've bumped up to almost 3.5%, but I'm hesitant to go up to 3.5%.
Because I was asking, what do we project in 2025?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Through the chair to Councilman Jones, in the past, we've projected as high as 4%.
We projected 4%?
And we were not able to achieve that in the last several years.
2.5%. One question I didn't ask on, on expenses, if I can ask now. The overtime beyond the sheriff's department, you said there's going to be no overtime?
Through the chair to Councilman Jones, there's also $3.5 million overtime for juvenile court.
That is included?
That is included.
But the rest of the potential overtime is not included in the budget?
No.
How much overtime in that area that's not being budgeted this time? How much was the overtime over the previous two years?
Councilman Jones, I'd have to go back and provide that number, and I could by department. I mean, the larger department that may have overtime would be the Department of Health and Human Services, but they're always receiving additional funding for the special projects that they're working overtime for. So when they do work overtime, generally we're getting an allocation letter from ODJFS, which then we budget, we budget the expense, but the revenue comes in to offset that.
So you are anticipating that there will be overtime, but you think it will be covered by different costs?
Yeah, through the chair to Councilman, it'll be covered with additional funding we receive from the state and federal governments.
Funding that's not reflected in this budget?
Councilman Jones, there's going to be an item on the next fiscal agenda where ODJFS provided the Department of Health and Human Services with, I believe it was about $600,000 in Medicaid dollars specifically to work on Medicaid enrollment, special project type stuff. So they are working overtime.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question to the chair, to the director. Director, just remind me, where are we at currently with the sale of the Hughes Building?
Through the chair to the councilmen, we have not moved to sell the building. We're actually going to use it in 2026, I believe, for, to relocate some agencies before they're actually moved into 1801 Superior, which is the old Cleveland Plain Dealer Building. The, the agency I'm referring to is the Department of Senior Adult Services. They're currently going to be moving out of their Mount Pleasant site temporarily relocated to the Hughes Building. And then, once their building, their area is complete, they will move over to 1801.
Right, and we believe that we will sell the building in one year and it will be sold in 2027?
Correct.
For $3 million?
Through the chair to the councilman, yes, that's what we're, we're hearing from public works.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Director, today at the Investment Advisory Committee, our, our consultants estimated the annual income of our portfolio at $23.5 million per year. Is there something different between that number and the, and the $30 million number you have? Or, or is that, or is that different, something I should be concerned about?
No, Councilman Miller, the difference is the Star Ohio rate on our cash balance that we have onhanded at any given time. It could be made up of general fund levy dollars, special revenue dollars. It's the cash we have in the bank earning interest. That's the differential between what you're seeing from, I believe it was from Meter that provided the number. The difference there is Meter is providing you the number for interest on the portfolio, not necessarily on the cash balance that the county has in the bank.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Continue.
I just, I like graphs and charts, so I just thought everyone would be interested to see. You know, when you put, I'm sorry, percentages on our revenue categories, you'll see sales tax, largest category at 54%, followed by charges for services in our governmental revenue and property taxes. This is general fund revenue only. So now I'll move into some of the expenses. So this slide summarizes expenditures by budget line for 2026 and '27. '26 is budgeted at $634 million, and 2027 is budgeted at $650.8 million. Personnel services, other expenditure subsidies. Budgets for both years include the budget adjustments that we talked about previously on those last three slides. So those are built into these numbers already. And page 22 in the budget book provides this same detail, these same numbers by department, if anyone wants to see the breakdown as to what departments are receiving what portion of this $633 million. Another graph, just budgeted expenditures and subsidies by function of county government. I find it interesting. Again, this is only for the general fund. Public safety makes up the majority of the expenditures, 45%, followed by judicial at 22, legislative and executive at 20. So these are our general fund subsidies on the next chart. So subsidies for the general fund total $64.9 million in 2026 and $67.8 million in 2027. Most subsidies are for debt service. You'll see the first nine lines are for debt service, followed by centralized custodial, emergency management, the CIP for facilities, the dog kennel, subsidy for soil and water, Cuyahoga Green Energy, and our 27th payer reserve, which will materialize in 2027 ironically. The Healthy Urban Tree Canopy, the casino tax transfers for economic development, the Community Development Supplemental Grant, and Gateway Note. And finally, the cash transfer for IT capital. We have $2 million budgeted in subsidy for IT capital. So this slide summarizes our estimated general fund ending cash balance. So at second quarter, we estimated 2025 beginning, estimated a 2025 ending cash balance of $134.8. So using that number and carrying it forward, 2026, as you saw, revenues budgeted at $634.9, expenditures at $569.1, subsidies at $64.3. So we estimate an ending cash balance of $135.7. And then following through to 2027, revenues are budgeted at $652 million, expenditures at $582.9, subsidies at $67.8, and again, ending at $136.9 million. You'll notice there's about a million dollars there that, of growth each year, and that's because of that small surplus we have projected in the budget for both 2026 and 2027. Questions on the general fund?
Any questions? I think we've asked them as we've gone along.
So I guess at this point, I'll switch over to the Health and Human Services levy. Similar format. I'll have the same kind of slides and same, same setup here. Similar format, I'll have the same kind of slides and same setup here. So this slide summarizes the Health and Human Services levy budget for '26 and '27. The budget's basically balanced, small $58,000 surplus in '26 and a $1.3 million budget surplus in '27. Just quickly on the revenue, there's not much here. There's only really three categories. So this slide, budgeted Health and Human Services levy revenue for '26 and '27. Overall, HHS revenue budgeted $279.3 in '26 and $280.3 in '27. Intergovernmental budgeted $15.5 each year. This is the homestead exemption. Other revenues budgeted $1 million, but only for 2027. And that's specifically, that's a million dollar transfer back from the Social Impact Fund for the Pay for Success Project. And then property taxes, you see the two levies are budgeted to generate $263.8 million each year. And those are the numbers that we expect to see this year. In fact, we've already seen these numbers, and we're just carrying them forward into future years. Again, a graph, not that there's much to see here. Property tax make up the majority at 94% of the revenue coming in. So this slide summarizes budget expenditures for '26 and '27. '26 is budgeted at $279.2 million. 2027 is budgeted at, again, $279 million. The other expenditures budget, you see the line there, that's basically the cost of the tax collection each year for the levy portion of the property taxes that are collected. The subsidies budget is for the levy subsidies that are for the Adams Board, Juvenile Court, the Department of Health and Human Services, all the divisions that make that up, Public Safety and Metro Health. And included in these numbers are some of the budget adjustments that were approved for Juvenile Court, the Department of Health and Human Services, and also Public Safety. So the next slide, we'll get into subsidies. And I purposely set this slide up just so that everyone could see the reductions that were necessary to balance the budget. Subsidies for Adams Board, Juvenile Court, Department of Health and Human Services, those are the divisions there in the middle. Metro Health were reduced by $19.9 million in 2026 and $22.5 million in 2027. The subsidies, actually, the budgeted subsidies are the next column over, not the column in red, but the next column over in black, were budgeted at $275.4 million in 2026 and $275.1 million in 2027. Page 25 in the budget book provides more detail by department on all of these cuts or reductions, but I have three slides. The next three slides will detail some of these reductions by program, by vendor. I've got quite a bit of detail coming up. I just wanted everyone to see where the reductions were coming from, by either Division of Health and Human Services, the Adams Board, Juvenile Court, or Metro Health.
So, for the record, Councilwoman Simon is in attendance.
So as I said, the next three slides, they detail the Health and Human Service levy reductions by department, or I really don't consider Metro Health or Adams Board to be departments, but they're listed here as well. Just to run through these, the Adams Board annual subsidy reduced by $4 million in 2026 and $4.5 million in 2027. Common Please annual subsidy for task reduced by $888,982 in '26 and $917,309 in '27. This was an easy reduction to do. The Common Please Court has this in a special revenue fund, which has a cash balance of roughly $5 million. So the subsidy was not really needed for them. Health and Human Services Administration contracts were reduced by $982,700 in 2026 and $1,232,700 in 2027. You can see the areas where the reductions were, Case Western, Cleveland Hearing, so on and so on. They're all listed there. Health and Human Services, the Division of Job and Family Services, the part-time customer service aides will be reduced by $404,536, 2026 and 2027. The Health and Human Services child support fatherhood contracts will be reduced by $80,000 in 2026, $160,000 in 2027. Health and Human Services Division of Children and Family Services contracts will be reduced by $6 million in 2026 and $9.7 million in 2027. You see, they're all listed there. They're not all contracts. Some of them are, something like the Sheriff's Deputies, for example. Jackie Fletcher stated she no longer needed them, so she's no longer going to be paying for them. The remainder of them are, I believe they're all contracts, Say Yes, Canopy, FCSS, Neighborhood Colabs, Board and Care, and Out of Home Care.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, you may. Please proceed.
President, Walter, I'm going to get knee-deep into all of the adjustments and cuts. But with the Canopy, we just had them for a hearing week or two ago in HHS, and they were looking for an extension of the dollars they currently have. Where's this $500,000? What numbers did it coming from?
Through the chair to Councilman Sweeney, this $500,000 would be next year's money, not what they have now.
Yeah, but where's the $500,000 being taken from? The money that they have right now, they're going to keep?
Yeah, the reduction is to next year, next year's contract.
Okay, through the chair to Walter, the money that they currently have, the grant to do what they're doing, which they want an extension on, that money's not going to be touched?
If the extension is to the current contract, the extension may be for $500,000 less.
But we're going off the extension number of $3.8 million?
Yes, I believe so, Councilman Sweeney.
We'll get knee-deep on this a little bit more, but thank you for going line by line for me.
Yeah, some of these questions probably better answered by Director Merriman or Director Fletcher.
And I'm just trying to prepare myself.
Oh, I understand. I'll do what I can.
Disrespect at all, I know.
Oh, no, I don't take it that way. I'll do what I can to answer the questions.
Vice President Conwell.
Thank you. Through the chair to Walter, or David, whoever. I noticed that all the reductions in 2026 and 2027 are fairly stable for most, pretty much all of the departments, except for when you come down to Fatherhood Program and Say Yes College Now. Say Yes College Now is not, it's an outside agency, not really under our umbrella. Do you have any feedback of why Fatherhood would double in cutbacks? And also, are we going to go over later the specifics of how that impacts the department?
Through the chair to Councilwoman Conwell, I would say the specifics would come from the Department Director, either David Merriman, or in that case, it would be Tiffany Dobbins-Brasleton.
Okay, and they will be here today?
They will not be here today. They'll be here for their own budget hearings next week.
So we'll wait to then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And in the spirit of Councilwoman Conwell's question, from your 50,000-foot level, and executives said they weren't making cuts just straight across the board. You know, in years, years past, it could have been a 10% cut straight across the board, but 10% to an office like Office of Reentry or something, only two people working, that's a loss of a person. So is your overall approach to be sensitive to that? So that although I don't know what percentage, you know, a cut is in $400,000 to Say Yes, can I assume from your level, you were being sensitive to what impact that had on that particular department?
Through the chair to Councilman, these cuts were more strategic than they were across the board.
Yes, more strategic.
And I just want to, this is only the first page. There's two more pages to detail the cuts or the reductions.
Okay, all right, all right.
You mentioned Reentry, and in some of the others, those are a little further down the list. They're in alphabetical order.
Okay.
I just, I'd like, let me get through the next two, and there may be some more questions as well.
All right, no problem.
Okay, on this page, we have Senior Adult Services contracts being reduced by $250,000 in 2026 and $350,000 in 2027. And then the next area down below that is the early childhood area, contract reductions of $1.8 million in 2026 and $1.9 million in 2027. And then one more page. Family and children first, council, the contracts are reduced by $595,122, and then $705,000 in 2027. Homeless service contracts reduced by $1.5 million in 2026 and $755,987 in 2027. And one of the areas, Councilman, that you mentioned, Reentry, the contracts were reduced by $400,000 in each year. And then also, last but not least, Metro Health's annual subsidy reduced by $3 million for 2026 and $1.5 million for 2027. So these levy subsidy reductions, as you saw in the previous couple of slides, they total $9.9 million for 2026 and $22.5 million for 2027. And they were really needed to balance the budget for the two years, for the biennium. Questions about these reductions that I can answer? Glad to do it.
Any further questions at this time? I certainly look forward to getting into this in a lot more detail when the Directors come in. But you're giving us a good overview of what's in and what's not.
To Councilman Miller, I wanted to be as clear as possible as where these were coming from. And whether it was a program, or whether it was a contract, whether it was just the subsidy, I just wanted it to be out there so everybody was aware.
We appreciate that.
Again, another chart, percentages for the budgeted subsidies by department. And you see the majority of the subsidies support the Department of Health and Human Services. 66% of the subsidies go there, followed by the Adams Board, Metro Health, and then Juvenile Court. So here, we're summarizing the ending cash balances for 2026 and 2027. Second quarter, we estimated an ending balance for the year at 17.6 becomes our beginning balance. 2027, as you saw, revenue budgeted at $279.3 million. Expenditures and subsidies budgeted to total $279.2 and leaves us with an ending cash balance of $17.7 million. And then following through to 2027, budgeted revenue, $280.3 million, expenditures and subsidies of $279. We estimate ending 2027 balance of about $19 million. Questions about the Health and Human Services levy?
This, Conwell.
Through the chair to Walter, just on the operating revenue for 2027, how are you calculating that to be an increase, and where would that revenue be coming from?
It's a slight increase, through the chair to Councilwoman Collins, it's a slight increase, about $1 million. That's the transfer back of the social impact money for the Pay for Success Project. It's not really a reduction of expense as it's transferred over, it becomes revenue coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, continue.
Just quickly to go over in all funds, just to give everyone a picture of the entire budget that the county executive mentioned. For 2026, revenues are budgeted to total $1.774 billion. Expenditures budgeted to total $1.948 billion. And then following through 2027, revenues are budgeted to total $1.798 billion and expenditures budgeted to total almost $1.971 billion. And to break that down a little further, I just wanted everyone to see it sort of by fund, because we always talk about general fund and then levy and special revenue. So here is the revenue broken down by fund, that same $1.773 and $1.798. You can see the general fund portion, the Health and Human Services levy portion, and the special revenue funds portion. I believe that the next chart puts this into perspective, you know, like by budget line. So on an all-funds basis, intergovernmental revenue is our largest category, followed by property taxes, followed by charges for services, and then sales taxes. So it's not like the general fund where sales tax is our largest percentage. On an all-funds basis, it is not. It's intergovernmental revenue.
I'll let you finish this slide.
So just detailing expenditures by fund type, so I tried to follow the same format. General fund expenditures, $634, and then $651, '26 and '27. Health and Human Services, $279.2 in 2026 and $279 in 2027. And you can see special revenue, $1.035 billion in 2026 and $1.041 billion in 2027, clearly our largest category.
So, Director, on this slide, the special revenue funds expenditures are higher than the revenues by pretty substantial amounts. And the question is, how much concern should we have about that?
Councilman Miller, the reason for the expenditures being higher than the revenues is because of the cash that we have now. We have a lot of special revenue fund cash. For example, Road and Bridge and the opioid fund, and we still have some COVID-19, some ARPA dollars left. We have these special revenue funds with big cash balances. So what you have here is revenue coming in from the special revenue funds with unspent cash balances from previous years. That's why the expenditures are higher than the revenues. I hope I'm clear with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Ms. Simon, followed by Conwell.
Just for clarification, so in terms of balancing the budget, or we're using, it's not revenue, it's just funds that are not used, like the opiate? We're trying to balance the budget with opiate funds?
Through the chair to Councilwoman Simon, for the general fund and levy, we are not doing that. But in special revenue areas, in many cases, we're budgeting cash in addition to revenue that's coming in to cover our expenditures. You're welcome.
Continue.
So once again, a chart with some percentages on it. You see, our largest percentage is in social services, 29%, followed by legislative and executive at 22%, public safety at 17, and then judicial at 10. I think most of the council members are aware, social services, there's a lot of state and federal dollars that roll in from many different sources. Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, a lot for mental health and substance abuse that we receive, that falls into that category. So this slide summarizes ending cash. Second quarter, we estimated that we would start 2026 with the beginning cash balance of $690 million. As you saw, revenues budgeted $1.774, expenditures at $1.948. We're estimating to end 2026 at $516 million, and then carrying that through for 2027, same thing, revenues at $1.798, expenditures at $1.971, ending cash balance projected at $3.43. at 343 million. Questions about all funds? So at this point, Councilman, I'd like to move into capital, the next item on the, on the agenda. So I did my best here to summarize the capital improvement plan for 2026 and 2027. So you can see in the top box, we have 98 capital improvement projects totaling 149.6 million dollars. 18 public works facilities projects estimated to total 38.1 million. Six county airport projects estimated to total 8.5 million. 62 road and bridge projects estimated to total 93.8 million. And then 12 IT projects estimated to total 9.2 million dollars. The second box is for 2027. We have 53 capital improvement projects totaling 117.3 million dollars. 28 of them are public works facilities with a estimated cost of 90.6 million. Three county airport projects estimated to total 675,000 dollars. Nine road and bridge projects estimated to total 17 million dollars. And then 13 IT projects, roughly 9 million dollars. So pages 155 through 162 in the budget book contain all of the capital improvement project details.
So Director, why is the general fund expenditure almost twice as much in 27 as opposed to 26?
To Councilman Miller, these projects are intended to take several years. Once they start, they will not be paid out over time. We have roughly 10 million dollars in capital project dollars available for the next, for each of the next two years. We will pay them out incrementally over time. In 2026, we'll be paying still for projects from probably the previous two years at least. And then going forward, we sort of follow that same, that sort of same rhythm where we're funding what we can, projects come up all the time and we, we process them as, as payments are due. We have about, the last I checked, we had close to 30 million dollars in the capital projects fund and cash available. So it's, it's a building effect. We put money in there each year, projects come and projects go, and we keep adding them as, as they become necessary.
Do we have funds available to carry out all the projects listed for 26 and 27 in this plan?
To the, to Councilman Miller, for 26 and 27, I don't believe we have enough money to cover all those projects.
You said you do or you do not?
Do not believe we have enough to cover all these projects. I mean, you're, I mean, 2027, we have about 90 million dollars of public works facility projects that would theoretically be covered with the general fund.
So we're identifying what the capital needs are, but we're not able to do, do all of it?
We identify these, all the projects that are known at this point in time, but we're not funding them at full value, no.
So ballpark estimate, what percentage of it are we actually able to do? Is it two-thirds of it? Is it half of it? Is it?
My estimate would be about half, Councilman.
About half? And the rest is deferred?
It is. Deferred over time as funding becomes available. We've been able to consistently fund capital for the last several years at about 10 million dollars. But I just want to be clear, the 10 million dollars is just for facilities. The road and bridge projects, those are funded with special revenue. Those are completely funded. And IT, we fund about 2 million dollars each year. I believe Andy Johnson comes up with several million dollars more than that in projects that he's not able to, to fund.
Thank you. Yes.
Help me to follow along, Walter. Where of the, half of the county projects that you think we can fund it, where is that reflected in, in this budget? Or is it in there?
Through the chair to, to Councilman Jones, what's funded in the budget is about 10 million dollars each year for facilities, 2 million dollars for IT. I would say all of the road and bridge projects are funded as well as the capital projects for the airport. It's the facilities projects that we have the issues with. But I think a lot of the facilities projects over time will be reduced when the new jail is built and we're no longer paying for repairs in the two current jails.
Okay, so the, the county jail, is that reflected in here?
Yes. It's in the facilities projects, Councilman.
What page would that be? Where would I?
It would be pages 155 to 162.
So the councilman points Director on page 156, the jail project, many of the 2027 estimated costs are to, to be determined, like a lot of them. And so it doesn't give us a clear picture of how much these projects are going to cost.
Yeah, there's, there's Justice Center and, and, and jail projects going out for, for the next several years. If you look down to the first page, there would be one, page 156, you see Jail One CIP, Jail Two CIP. Yeah, these are probably some questions for, for Public Works Director, Mike Dever. These are CIPs from his department. There's a lot in there for Jail One, Jail Two, Court Tower. Anything listed there, the location of the Justice Center?
Is the new jail included in the capital plan?
No. To the, to Councilman Miller, no, it's not included in the, in the capital plan.
Why not? It's supposed to be completed in 2029, well within the five-year forecast period.
We have, Councilman Miller, if you recall, we issued the note for the pre-construction cost of the jail. That's about everything that's in, it's not even in our, in our plan at this point in time. We don't, that money is set aside specifically for pre-construction costs of the jail. It's outside of the CIP. We have a special fund that's set up that houses the 41 million dollars that was received for the jail in pre-construction costs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair, has that jail cost been locked in yet or is that something that still could potentially grow?
Through the chair to, to Councilman Jones, I do not believe the jail cost has been locked in at all. We have not seen a GMP.
To the councilman, we're expecting to get an indication on, on the GMP right at the end of the year and, and for the, the official definitive information in the first quarter next year.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Simon.
And this probably has to be flushed out later in these hearings, but with regard to the Justice Center that we need to address as a capital project, what we're seeing in front of us here, are these just repairs? Is that what we're looking at? Maintenance?
Through the chair to, to Councilwoman Simon, yes, these are repairs.
Okay. So the fund that we anticipated to fund the Justice Center project would have came, come from the quarter percent in the bond issuance, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so we don't know at this time whether there'll be sufficient funds available to do something with the Justice Center, correct?
Through the chair to Councilwoman Simon, until we see the GMP, I'm not sure we can.
For the jail?
Yeah, we can't answer.
And so with these capital projects in front of us, perhaps we need to see whether some of these projects need to be deferred to make sure that there's funding for the Justice Center?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely, okay.
I believe so.
Thank you.
Through the chair to Councilwoman Simon, you see a lot of these Justice Center projects, they're out there to 29 and to 2030. Depending on when the jail is completed, some of these projects may not have to be done.
Projects other than the Justice Center I'm talking about?
Yes.
You too?
Yeah, but I mean, when we list the Justice Center here, it includes the jail too.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Continue.
So now I'm moving on to debt, just to follow the, the agenda. So quickly to go over debt, January 1, 2026, we will have roughly 1.066 billion in outstanding debt. And what I'm trying to do here is to, just to point out, the graph is what it is, but more importantly, we have 25 outstanding debt issues, five general obligation at 247.8 million, eight non, I'm sorry, eight sales tax issues totaling 422, 10 non-tax revenue issues totaling 211.1, one taxable revenue issue at 18.4, that's the, the Flatsy Spank. And then one certificate of participation, that's on the Hilton Hotel at 167 million. So in this budget, 2026 and, and 27, we have roughly 108.5 million dollars budgeted for debt service on these debts. In the budget book, if you pay attention to pages 145 to 154, details every debt that the county has.
What was that page number again?
145 to 154. Councilman Jones, it's a, it's the, it's in the blue area of each slide here. It's a reference point to the budget book, just to make things easier for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions about debt? So we have one new policy initiative for 2026 and 2027. This policy is in accordance with their grant policy. Grants are budgeted only in special revenue funds only, no longer being budgeted in the two operating funds, which were the general fund and the HHS levy fund. Previously, we were budgeting in both operating funds and special revenue funds. You know, this resulted in, in budget surpluses for many departments, and it also led to audit findings to the county for having excess appropriations because we were budgeting, say, a grant on the general fund side and in a special revenue fund. So we're no longer doing that. So you can see the, the chart at the bottom, basically what we're doing is we're moving 12 million, I'm sorry, 15 million dollars in general fund and levy expenses to be budgeted as special revenue fund expenses. This is where they end up each year anyhow. We're just doing things correctly now. I think a lot of this was, was our, some of our growing pains with the new in-force system and we're figured out how to do things effectively now, so we're comfortable moving into special revenue and no longer budgeting in the two operating funds.
So Director, what's the reason for having a different policy for the general fund, levy fund as opposed to special revenue?
Councilman Miller, it's, it's not a different policy for them, it's just that we're no long, in the past, we've budgeted the same number in the general fund as we did in special revenue. So we budgeted it twice. We're only budgeting it once now and it's only going to be in special revenue.
Understood, okay.
So that, that was the point of the chart. I just wanted you to see that we were no longer going to budget in, say, for the county executive, the 637,000 dollars in the general fund, we're going to budget it now only in the special revenue fund. So the budgets are all the same, they're just budgeted in different pots.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, I'd like to shift into the departmental budgets. Most of these budgets are boards and commissions, you know, they approve their budgets later in the year, basically overriding what we have in our system and in our budget book right now.
Okay, so before you begin that.
Yes.
Just, just a general comment that these are, these are typically boards and commissions, these are, some of these are areas where we have only a modest degree of control over their budget and they're, they're places for, that for one reason or another, we did not feel it necessary to bring in the, the director of, of the department or the board in, in for a departmental hearing, but, but that it was sufficient to have, have the OBM director give us an overview of, of their budget. So that's, that's what these are. If, if there's any, after hearing this today, if we need more information, well, we can, we can call them in, but, but normally that doesn't happen.
Councilman Miller, there were a couple of directors that did express an interest in, in speaking today when we're going over their budget, if you don't mind.
Okay, fine.
So I'm going to start with the Board of Developmental Disabilities. So the Board of Developmental Disabilities provides support and services to residents with obviously developmental disabilities. The 2026 and 2027 budgets are there before you, budgets of 151 million and 152 million, just merely estimates. The Board of Developmental Disabilities, primary revenue sources, their 3.9 mils continuous levy generates roughly 107 million dollars annually. And as I stated, the BODD generally approves their budget later in the year, which will ultimately replace what I have here. The superintendent and CEO, Amber Gibbs, I believe is here and wants to say a few words or at least comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon. I did, I don't know if we have slides. I did send a few slides to go through with you to just give you a sense of our budget. It's nice to see several of you again. I was just here with the Health and Human Services Committee a few weeks ago, and I appreciated that time.
Ms. Gibbs, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Amber Gibbs. I'm the CEO and superintendent of the Cuyahoga County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Do we have the slides here?
I'm sorry, Ms. Gibbs, who did you send the slides to?
I sent them to you and to Walter. I did bring copies.
Thank you.
Just in case.
Been down here.
Approach and provide them to you.
Here they come.
I know we don't usually present to the county council about our budget, but we are in unusual times in the last few years as we, we planned for long term. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to just share a little bit with you about who we support, what we do, and what we're looking at over the next few years. So I'll, I'll do this fairly briefly. But you can see, I shared with you a little bit about what we do. I know many of you may not be as familiar with our organization. And so we support and empower people with developmental disabilities to live, learn, work, and play in the community. We provide a variety of services to individuals with disabilities and their families, everything from serving the very youngest children ages zero to three in our early intervention program, through assisting school districts, serving kids with special needs, to transitioning out of high school, housing and employment opportunities in the community, therapies, travel training, essentially all of the services that wrap around an individual to make them able to live their best lives in the community. Who do we serve? I provided some demographic information. We serve about 15,000 people of all ages with developmental disabilities. We have been collecting data for several years. This was a voluntary endeavor that we took on because we wanted to know the, the proportion of people that we serve in our organization. And we wanted to make it sure, make sure that it looked like Cuyahoga County residents. And you can see from that slide that we actually serve a more diverse population than live in Cuyahoga County. The numbers do not add up to a full 100% because this information is voluntary. So some people choose not to provide this information to us. But essentially, we serve about 46% of the people that we serve are white, 38% are black or African-American, 2% are Asian, 2% identify as another race, and 6% with two or more races. And additionally, 9% of the people we serve identify as Hispanic or Latin. And additionally, 9% of the people we serve identify as Hispanic or Latino. At a glance, our 2026 budget, our revenue is decreasing from 143 million to about $140 million. There is overall a $5 million difference in our levy collections estimated from our budget of '25 to our budget of '26, and that's based on what we actually collected this year in '25. So even though there's a $5 million levy dip, our overall revenue decrease is only 3.5 million. You can see on this slide that our revenue budget, 78% of our revenue is made up of our levy that was last passed, as Walter said, in 2005. 12% of our revenue is federal, 1% is state, and 9% is other. And our spending next year, our expenses will decrease from $180 million to $177.6 million, which is a 2.7 million dollar decrease. Even though we are planning a decrease in expenditures next year, we have three major spending increases for 2026 that I wanted to point out that are putting a lot of pressure on our budget and our system. Our Medicaid waiver match, which is the portion that we pay for Medicaid services for people with developmental disabilities, is increasing by $2 million next year. Our employee benefits are expected to increase by $2 million next year. The executive also mentioned that benefits increases were a significant issue for the county. And then we have additional funding that we are using for communication and outreach, about a few hundred thousand dollars increase there. The next slide takes us to our 2026 revenue. Our revenue falls into four different categories. I mentioned our local levy revenue. It's a 4% decrease for next year, based on what we collected this year. It's $109 million this year and next year, we hope. When we first passed our levy, we were collecting $117 million. Our federal revenue includes the billing that our staff do for the work that they do directly with people with disabilities or that they coordinate for those individuals. It includes billing to Medicaid for a home that we have where we provide services to children, many of whom are children who are served by several different systems, including Department of Children and Family Services, perhaps the Adams Board, and many times Juvenile Court. And then we have a few small miscellaneous contracts that generate revenue from the federal government, including for vocational rehab and Title 20, which is for our early intervention, our youngest kids that we serve. Our state revenue is expected to decrease by about $400,000. This is a small portion of our revenue. The state of Ohio does not directly send us money. They do put in a portion of the waiver match obligation that we have. So our state revenue is related to capital housing money. There's a small pot of money at the state level where developmental disabilities boards can access dollars to provide housing for people with disabilities. And then lastly, our other revenue, we are expecting a small increase in our other revenue. As things get tighter from the federal government, we have to look elsewhere to find revenue sources. So we continue to evaluate the properties we have and the equipment that we have. We do plan to sell a number of homes next year and potentially one building. Our employee share of our health insurance, that is going to increase, the amount that employees are paying. And then we do get some reimbursements from community partners. Again, those are agreements that you have seen before for partnerships we have with DCFS and Adams. And we also do work on behalf of the Common Please Court and the Juvenile Court. So overall, our total revenue is expected to decrease by about 2% next year. Our next slide is our 2026 expenses. Our salaries and benefits, we plan to have a 0% variance there. We have held our salaries and wages, we have decreased our salaries and wages for next year. That is because we are not expanding in the number of positions that we have. We actually have a very small decrease planned. We have added a vacancy rate to our budget for next year so that we can hold positions as we need to, to stay within our budgetary guidelines. And then our benefits will significantly increase. I know the county exec mentioned 10% for county. We are looking at closer to 20% in our increase for next year. Our program expenditures, program is essentially everything related to a person with a developmental disability. So our program expenditures are decreasing just slightly by 2%. That is not related to a reduction in programs. That is related to keeping some areas flat or some contracted services reduced because we have found other ways to provide those services. So overall, our program expenditures, although they have reduced, our Medicaid waiver match, again, has increased by $2 million for next year. So we've had to be very conservative in all other areas of spending to try to stay as flat as possible there. And our administrative expenses are decreasing by 1%. Our expenses that are included there are everything related to buildings, property, equipment, essentially running the organization. And that includes the treasurer's fees we pay to the county for the work that you do on our behalf. Here, we were able to restructure some leases, to redo some things with our utilities and our upkeep of buildings to increase our savings. So even though those areas like utilities and technology are on the rise, we were able to refinance some things to find savings there. Overall, our total expenditures are expected to reduce by 1%. The next slide is a very simple one, but it is my favorite in those that you're looking at. This shows that our program versus administrative costs. 90% of our budget is directly related to program costs, serving people with developmental disabilities. Only 10% of our costs are related to running the organization. We have tried over several years to really be very thin in our administrative spending, but this is work that we still have to do. It's purchasing, making payments to vendors so they continue to provide services. It's our buildings, several of which are still used for people with developmental disabilities to attend programs. And it's communication and outreach to every area of the county so that people know we are here to support them. Very briefly, looking ahead, we are really being very conservative in our spending. Our Medicaid waiver costs for individuals with disabilities are a lifetime commitment. So every time we enroll someone on a waiver, we are aware of the fact that we will be likely supporting them for most of their lives. We are focusing, continuing to focusing on the needs of the people we serve rather than every want that they might have. Our goals are to make sure that people are healthy and safe and that they're living lives in the community, and we focus on those services that allow us to accomplish that. We continue to focus on programs. I mentioned that we continue to be very tight in our administrative spending. And we are evolving even further to use our staff expertise and leveraging community partnerships. This is something that has changed over the years as an agency. When we were first established, we provided almost all services for people with developmental disabilities. We operated schools, we had day programs, we found people employment. And now that's evolved. Kids go to typical schools, and we provide technical supports. People with disabilities find jobs in the community, and we help them gain the skills to do that, and we provide supports to keep them in their jobs. For many years, we provided all therapies to people with disabilities. Now, many of those individuals we serve access therapies through our many hospital systems and our great community resources. And we continue to help support those organizations with training, and we provide services to the individuals with the most severe disabilities who need us to provide that expertise. And finally, just a note on our community impact. We continue to make small investments in various areas of the county to increase accessibility, both in physical space and in programming, making sure that yoga classes and rec centers and employment sites can accommodate people with disabilities. And our waiver program alone brings in almost $500 million to Cuyahoga County. So that not only helps people with disabilities to live and work in the community and become taxpayers and become great neighbors and become volunteers at all of the wonderful places Cuyahoga County has to offer, but it also provides thousands of jobs through private providers. Our work helps not only the people that we serve, but thousands of other individuals who make their living doing this work. That was a very high speed, but I know you have a lot to go through today. So I would be glad to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Councilman Cowan.
Thank you very much. Hello.
Hi.
I'm just curious, how much money do you have in your reserve fund?
By the end of next year, I believe we will have close to $70 million, which is less than one year's waiver match obligation and less than half of our operating budget.
Okay. Are you still accepting new applicants?
Yes, we do not have a waiting list for services, either for county board services directly or for Medicaid waivers.
Okay, one last question, if I may. This is privatized now?
Only our day services are privatized. So the workshops that we used to operate in the community are now operated by private providers. We still fund all of those services through our levy and our waiver match payments, and we also provide
Has there been any savings in wages or anything since it's been privatized?
Yes, we did that in 2020, and we did see some savings in wages. We went from a staff of about 1,200 people to 600 staff.
About half that. Thank you.
So just a couple comments on the privatization. This was not particularly by choice. The directive came down from on high that the boards cannot administer these programs and also run these, this kind of service, that it was a conflict of interest. So there was kind of a divestiture that was required.
Correct.
And the second thing is that I would just mention that next year's budget shows an excess of expenditure over revenue by about $35 million. So the $70 million reserve might sound a lot, like a lot, but at the current expenditure pattern, it's not going to last very long. So there's definitely concern if you look a little bit down the road. Any other questions for Dee Dee? Councilman Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Superintendent and CEO, welcome.
Thank you.
You do a great job. Just in your budget presentation, that's 65, 35, male, female?
Yes. Yes, we serve about 57% are children, the rest are adults, but there is a significant higher number of males served than females. And that's something that we see in the data nationwide. There are just generally more males diagnosed.
I'm going to have to dig in a little bit because
Yeah.
Wait, it is maybe. And through the chair, just on the budget, you're funded by the levy, right?
The levy is our largest revenue source, that's correct.
Then the levy is currently in the middle of it? Is it almost up?
It's a continuing levy. Prior to 2005, we were on the ballot every five years. In 2005, the county commissioners agreed to put us on for a continuing levy with the agreement that we would make that money last for 10 years. I'm very happy to say we are in our 20th year. We've been very, very thoughtful about our spending, but with inflation and costs increasing, we are certainly concerned about the future of that levy.
Through the chair, are you going out for a levy anytime soon?
That would be up to all of you, but it is something we have started talking about, the need for additional funding, very soon.
And if that's the case, we put it on?
Correct.
If it doesn't, if we don't put it on, what happens?
We wouldn't be able to meet our waiver match obligations. Waiver match obligations are the first bill that every county board of developmental disabilities must pay. And if there is no county board of developmental disabilities to pay that bill, the county is asked to pay that bill instead of us.
Thank you. So it's all hands on deck. The levy might be coming up, and we just got to convince the folks to continue funding the outstanding work you do for the people that are most in need and mostly forgotten sometimes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
So just one more comment. On Sunday afternoon, this past Sunday at noon on Puritas Avenue in my district, we dedicated a mural dedicated to people with developmental disabilities and featuring five people with developmental disabilities who agreed to have their faces on the mural. And it is on the theme of more alike than different. And it is the largest such mural in the United States, and so it's a big deal.
Yes, we appreciate your support very much. Thank you.
So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We now return to our regularly scheduled programming with Director Parfey Owitz.
So next, I'm going to move on to the Law Library. Law Library manages legal research, library resources for municipalities, and courts within Cuyahoga County. The budget here that you see before you for '26 and '27, $352,973 for '26 and $359,141 for '27, relatively flat. There are adjustments in here for staff onboard at Pay 19, the cost of living adjustment, and also the healthcare increase. This budget specifically funded with fines and fees from speeding tickets, which really, really surprised me when I did learn that a couple of years ago. I spoke with Kathy Dugan this morning, who's the director here, and she couldn't be here today, but she agrees basically with this budget that it's sufficient for the next two years.
Thank you.
Solid Waste, leader of resources and information expertise. Programs support sustainable materials management and reduce the environmental impact of waste. The two-year budgets here, 2026, $2,493,244, and 2027, at $2,513,116. Also relatively flat. What's included here, again, are Pay 13 adjustments, as well as cost of living and healthcare. The funding source here is specifically 100% waste generation fees. And this, like the Board of Developmental Disabilities, their board approves a budget later in the year, which will ultimately replace what you see here. I don't think Elizabeth is here from Solid Waste, so I don't think she had any issues with the way the budget was prepared. The next department is Regional Collaboration, established to support cost savings and cooperation between municipalities within the county and the county itself. The 2026 and '27 budgets are $372,868 and $382,60. Again, relatively flat, just including the adjustments that were put forth here in our base budget. Here's Pay 13, again, cost of living adjustments and healthcare, 100% funded by the general fund. I did not speak with Chris Alvarado, who's the director here, but I believe he would say this budget is sufficient for the next two years. Next, we have Soldiers and Sailors Monument. So this department obviously maintains and preserves the monument on Public Square. 2026, '27 budgets are $280,728 and $286,278 for 2027. Same basic principles here, Pay 13, cost of living and healthcare. A funding source is also general fund. The monument did submit, or the soldiers and sailors, it's Greg Palumbo specifically, submitted one request for $1,892 for guest services and maintenance, which was approved and included here in this budget. I believe Greg is here, but I'm not sure he did want to comment. Thanks, Greg. Next, we have the Ohio
Mr. Chairman? Yes? I just have, with the regional collaboration, I don't need to see, no, I know the director's there. You said it's cost savings? That's one of the objectives of the
Yes.
I'm just curious if we met some cost savings over the time, and he can get that to me eventually.
I'll get that to you.
I second that from Councilman Sweeney. If we can learn more of what the Department of Regional Collaboration is doing with almost $400,000, that'd be great.
I will provide that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
The Ohio State University Extension, opportunities for people to explore how science-based knowledge can improve social, economic, and environmental conditions. This is just a routine budget. It hasn't been changed in years. $222,300, it's what they've been receiving since my days back in HHS many years ago, funded with health and since my days back in HHS many years ago. Funded with Health and Human Services levy dollars, Nicole DeBose, she may want to comment here. She's come in the past, but I don't think I see her in the audience either. No. If you'd like to, sure.
Oh, wow. Bold.
Hi, good afternoon, Council. The Council President, my name is Nicole DeBose. I've been the Director of Ohio State Extension in Cuyahoga County for about 10 years now. So I've met some of you at different events, definitely Councilwoman Conwell and Councilman Miller, President Miller met you, and Councilman Jones as well. So thank you for your continued support. This, what Walter P. said is true. Our budget has been the same for as long as I can remember, as well, it precedes me. But I would like to ask for a slight increase, as with every other department, right? Our expenses are increasing, and this is for us a county appropriation, right? And so it's to cover our operating expenses, which have gone up. The Ohio State University supports my position. That's the only position that it supports within our office. The other positions, there are five of them, along with our operating cost lease and other expenses that are supported by this appropriation, which covers about 70% of that cost. The rest, we are, within a county, we have to fundraise for. So I'll just keep it short and simple. Any extra support would be helpful. We looking at a $325,000 budget for 2026, which may increase a bit with merit increases that typically average 3% in 2027.
Any questions, Councilman Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
You said a slight increase. Can you, not holding you to it, what would that be? $10,000, $100,000? What would you be, what do you think is fair with the budget situation that we're all beginning to digest here?
When I say small, I'm thinking about $20,000. That would keep us level without stressing us.
Just trying to get a ballpark.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Councilman Hauser?
To the Chair, to the Director. I'm not familiar with the work you guys do. I'm familiar with Ohio State University, but just very quickly, what is this money? I know you said the salaries and everything. What do you guys actually do?
Yeah, so we offer programming for 4-H youth development, community development. You all may be familiar with our Produce Perks program, which is a SNAP incentive program. We bring in about $3 million to the community with that program. We have Family and Consumer Sciences, which primarily teaches nutrition education to SNAP eligible families in schools and different community centers to the reentry population as well. And then we have Agriculture and Environmental Sciences, which supports our farmers' markets, basically our local food system. So we help entrepreneurs with, like farmers who may have a farm, right, in one of your districts, if they want to start selling their produce, their product, we help them do that. So from an economic standpoint, with that program, we bring in about $5 million into the district or the county.
Sounds like you guys leverage this funding to bring in additional resources. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I actually think this is the last slide. Board of Revision, okay? So I think everyone knows Board of Revision is here to hear property evaluation complaints. Again, a fairly flat budget. It includes the same type of adjustments, Pay 13, cost of living and healthcare, 3.1 million for 2026, and closer to 3.2 for 2027. This department is funded specifically with the Real Estate Assessment Fund. No general fund, no levy dollars here. Ron O'Leary is the Director. I don't know if he's here. Ron, you want to know? He has no comments. I think that he's satisfied with this budget as well.
So, Director, may I ask a question or two of Director O'Leary?
Of course.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of Council. Ron O'Leary with the Board of Revision.
Thank you so much, and I know that the last reappraisal generated a lot of interest and concern. I think the total number of Board of Revision complaints was maybe not atypical, since you had a lot of pre-meetings where some of it was resolved. But my question is, is how many residential property owners filed Board of Revision complaints in this cycle, and how many of those still have not been heard?
Mr. President, I'll need to get you the breakdown on the residential. I have the total number that we have, which is 11,456. We generally try to prioritize the residential complaints first. Commercial usually need more time anyway, because most of those, the parties are going to obtain an appraisal report from an appraiser. So we typically will front-load the residential. Right now, we are looking at probably completing the residential complaints by sometime in April of next year, which tracks pretty closely with what we historically do after an update or full revaluation year. And we also tend to, when people call our office asking about scheduling their complaints, we'll go ahead and just schedule those, so that the people that are wanting to get theirs heard right away can do that. But I'll get you the breakdown of, I have it, I just didn't print it off with me.
So, the $11,000, was that the total number filed, or is that the number that are still outstanding?
Mr. President, that's the total number filed. As of last week, we had made decisions, issued the decisions on, looks to be about 4,500 of those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Director, and this will conclude our initial overall budget hearing, and we will begin the departmental hearings on Monday, October 20, at 1:00. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, we now come to an item that's going to be heard at the council meeting for possible consideration for first reading adoption. And even though we're not going to have to vote on it today, I would ask the clerk to read the title and unofficially put it on the record. And then we're going to have Director Huth explain what this is and why it's urgent. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-0292, objecting to the creation of five residential tax increment financing incentive districts under Ohio revised code Section 5709.40(c) by the City of Brexville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Andrea. But a bit of a correction here, and I will explain why. It does need to be voted on today. I think it's on your agenda for first reading adoption.
Yes, that's what I said. It's under consideration for first reading suspension.
Okay.
It would be passed today.
I misunderstood. I apologize.
Okay.
So let me start off with what's going on here. On September 23, the county received a notice from the City of Brexville of their intent to establish five what are called TIF districts in the city. These districts are currently all unoccupied land, vacant land, and will ultimately, based on the city's notice to us, support development of 100 new single-family homes, with a total value for those 100 homes at $150 million. Now, the city's notice describes the way this tax incentive is working. It's called a TIF, Tax Increment Financing, and I'll get into that a little bit. They're going to exempt the improvements, you know, the new construction on this property. 100% of that value would be exempt for a period of 30 years. Now, this TIF is being put in place under a section of the code that we who do this call 40(c), because under 40(c), the county can object if the exemption is for more than 75% and longer than 10 years. So this proposal that the city is putting together checks both of those boxes. So we have the ability to object, and that's what the purpose of this resolution is. The objection basically brings everybody to the table, so we can talk about how to craft a compensation agreement, so the city can collect some of those taxes that would otherwise be brought in as real estate taxes. This is an exemption, but it's not your typical exemption, because the owners of those improvements are going to be required to make service payments equal to the taxes that they would have paid, but for the exemption. So when it's converted to a service payment that way, the city gets control over what happens to it. So in this case, they are keeping both the Brexville Rod V. High School District Hall and the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center Hall on the taxes they would otherwise receive, but then they get to keep the rest. And in this case, they're going to be using it to pay for, based on what I've been able to see from their development plan and their resolutions, they're going to use the money to pay for public infrastructure to support these new houses, you know, streets, sewers, parks, that sort of thing. So again, getting this objection passed is critical today, because the statute says that we have to have it certified to the City of Brexville within 30 days after we receive the notice. We have the notice somewhere around the 23rd, so this is the only meeting the council has between now and that 30-day mark. So I would recommend, I think the administration recommends, that you pass this resolution tonight, so we can get your objection on record. You can sit down at the table with them and figure out how to craft a compensation agreement to bring some of those dollars back into the county. Questions?
Thank you for your presentation. This is in Councilman Schlepper's district, and the Councilman is recognized.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just had some questions about, I guess procedural questions. So ultimately, this gives us the opportunity to negotiate with the City of Brexville in good faith. So potentially, instead of them getting 100% of those revenues for 30 years, it could potentially be 50%. Is there other opportunities? So let's say, and in full disclosure, I have spoken to the mayor of Brexville to just kind of get some perspective from him as well. So if they wanted to, let's say, relinquish two of the TIF districts and say, let's just do three, but then perhaps keep that same 30-year, 100% approach to this, is that something that could potentially be on the table? And I'm simply asking just to, you know, advocate for a city in my district.
So to the Councilman, to the Chairman, anything like that could be structured. I think with five districts like this, it gives us a lot of room to discuss and negotiate. I don't want to get too far down this road, though, because obviously you don't want to tip our hand in a public meeting, but there's a number of different ways we can address these concerns.
And then through the chair, if I may, ask just another question. So as you kind of alluded to, you know, these dollars would go back into the City of Brexville for infrastructure and other pieces that would be the result of, you know, these properties or this new construction. Is there an opportunity for us to kind of break down, you know, as we move forward, what the county would receive and then potentially re-outlay to the City of Brexville as opposed to what it is that they're trying to do? Because in my understanding, and I understand, you know, that this is very timely, but if they're able to kind of shed some light on what it is that they want to do, and it would be things that we as a county would also want to do in their community, I guess it sounds like really the big issue is control. So I'm just kind of get some clarification about that.
Again, to the Chairman, I think there's a lot of flexibility here, but, you know, right now I can't speak for our client, my client. And then again, I just don't want to do a whole lot of negotiating in public here.
Thank you.
Ms. Conwell?
Yeah, are we, we're not voting, are we voting on this now?
We're not going to vote on this now. This is just a preliminary discussion, but it is expected to come up, to be voted on tonight at the council meeting.
Okay. So through the chair to Mr. Huth, you mentioned service payments, that I guess the organization within use service payments. Is that correct?
Well, to the Chairman, the service payments are actually paid to the county, and then we send them back to the city. We'll send the piece to the schools that they would get, and then the balance would go back to the city.
Okay.
And then I'm assuming here, this is my guess, just because I've seen a lot of these deals, they're probably going to use it to fund debt service, to pay for all this other public infrastructure that they're talking about.
Okay, so instead of, so I'm trying to get a clarity on the service payments versus property taxes. So it would be service payments instead of property taxes?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, but we would be, because I was just going to ask, how do, we can enforce to some degree property taxes, but how do we enforce service payments? But if you're saying that service payments would come to us, still, how do we enforce the people to, the developers to pay that to them?
I can go very far down this rabbit hole. There will be, well, in the past, when we've done deals, when I have done deals like this, there's an agreement that gets filed with the Recorder's Office, requiring the property owner to make those service payments. It can act as a lien if necessary. Most often, a bondholder is going to want to see that there's a lien there, securing that service payment. But again, it doesn't get treated as taxes the way we would create, the way we would treat it as taxes.
I was just questioning, because I don't remember seeing anything like this, especially not at this quick of a time. It might have been a finance committee, but, which I don't set on.
The Simon?
Who owns the properties?
Right now, it's a variety of owners. There's, I think there's one, there's maybe five parcels that are owned by a single family, but the rest of it, I think it's a mishmash. Again, it's all vacant, though.
Is it vacant, or is it wooded? What's the-
It's all undeveloped right now.
Is it woods? Is it green space?
From what I can see from aerials, yes.
Yes, I'm sure they're, okay.
And going back to Councilwoman Conwell's question, if this resolution gets passed and we're not able to reach some agreement with the city, the statute says we get half of whatever we would otherwise get, starting in year 11. So, and the reason this is going to get really complicated from our fiscal office's perspective is because each of these exemptions starts when the improvement hits the duplicate and can run for 30 years. So it's going to be a rolling process, right? You're not going to build 100 homes all at once. So it's going to be kind of a bookkeeping nightmare, I think, in our auditor's office.
So this is, these are families that own this land, and they're trying to spur development with the developer with this TIF?
Mr. Chairman, to the Council, don't hold me to the, it's families that own it. There is one that I believe is, there's five parcels that are owned by a single family, but I don't know the ownership structures of all the others. But yes, the purpose is to spur development for the property.
Right, I understand. So it's a recommendation to object?
Yes.
To pass this?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Hearing none, this item will be before the council for possible first reading adoption at tonight's council meeting. Thank you very much for your assistance. All meetings of the Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the Ohio Open Meetings laws. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matters in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, the council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing- This afternoon, the council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action. During this time, our live stream will be down, and we ask all those not specifically needed for the executive session to remain in council chambers. Council members will convene in the adjacent Committee Room A and will re-enter the meeting once the executive session has ended. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and it requires a roll call.
Ms. Conwell? Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones is away from the dais at the moment. Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner is absent. Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher is away from the dais. Mr. Schlepper?
Yes.
Council President Miller?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will now adjourn for the meeting, adjourn the meeting for an executive session.
We are reconvening the committee of the hall and we are back on the record. Is there any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, the committee of the hall stands adjourned and we will hold the regular council meeting at 5 o'clock.